Calling to order the Monday, June 1st, 2020 Regular Meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henin?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Turbrack?
Here. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. With us this evening is Pastor Zach Dunlap.
Good and loving God, even with all that is going on around us, I remain convinced of your compassion, goodness, and love. Guide our city council members this evening as they make decisions about business and government, health, and safety. Protect our first responders and frontline workers. Be with us, Lord. Help us to be wise as we begin to reopen additional sectors of our economy. Remind us all that Black Lives Matter and above all empower us to listen to one another, to fight for justice, to speak the truth in love, and to use whatever power we might have for the good of others. In the strong name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge. My Pledge of Allegiance to the republic
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have reached the public comments for items that are included on tonight's agenda. Again, you may present your thoughts on issues that are included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please email the Clerk's Office at clerk@berklee-mich.net or call the Clerk's Office at 248-658-3310. If you would like to comment, please raise your hand if you are at the Zoom meeting, if you are calling in at 1312-626-6799. Again, that number is 1312-626-6799, and you will be recognized by either name or number. When you speak, please state your name and city of residence, and remember you will be limited to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I see no raised hands at this time.
Okay, we'll give them just another couple of seconds if they're dialing in. Again, it was 1312-626-6799.
We do have one.
Zach Dunlap, Berkeley, I would just have to say I was very excited to see tacos on the agenda for tonight, so just wanted to share my enthusiasm about that.
Thank you, Zach. Tori, are you anybody else dialing in?
No, sir.
Seeing nobody else, we will move to our order of business this evening, beginning with our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the item on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 38th Regular City Council Meeting on Monday, May 18th, 2020, Budget Work Session on Tuesday, May 12th, 2020, and Budget Work Session on Wednesday, May 13th, 2020.
You noticed we made a lot shorter for you this time because you had to read so much last time?
Right.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Dean with support from Councilmember Gavin. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Our consent agenda has been approved. We now move on to tonight's regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one on our regular agenda?
Resolution Number R 1820, matter of approving a resolution of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, requesting the cancellation of the annual Woodward Dream Cruise Event for 2020 due to public health and safety concerns attributed to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Mr. Baumgartner, would you please lead us off?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to members of council as well. This comes to you after quite a few conversations with several other communities up and down the Woodward Corridor. They've been working not only with the city managers of those various communities, but also the mayors have been in contact with one another as well. After reviewing all the options that we had available to us, every potential way that we could hold this event while being safe, while keeping the crowds down, while preparing for social distancing, ultimately, the various communities in our conversations decided that there was just not a feasible way to hold this event this year. As you know, I previously transmitted a letter over to the board asking them to cancel all in-person events, but merely try to hold a vehicle-only cruise. But unfortunately, not even that seems viable at this point, so we are joined with communities down in the Woodward Corridor and passing a resolution to transmit to the Dream Cruise Governing Board, asking for that cancellation, and then we hope they act on it on June 8th, which is their next meeting. So as you see from the text, we are formally requesting that the Dream Cruise for 2020 not occur, but we absolutely look forward to coming back in 2021.
So thank you for that, Mr. Baumgartner, and as was mentioned, this is obviously not something that any of us wanted to do or wanted to see happen, but in this new world that we're living in right now, all of the communities, I mean, some majority of the communities have gotten together and decided that we needed to be united in this, and we needed to be united in the safety of not only our residents, but all those that come to attend that weekend. Over a million folks come into the Woodward Corridor, and the last thing any of us want to see is a spike or increase in cases in September, a couple of weeks after the Dream Cruise, because we would have nobody to blame but ourselves if we allowed that to happen. It's difficult of a decision as this is, but we've seen and we talked about last with our budget, changes have to be made, we have to adjust, and this is something that the mayors and managers have gotten together and have discussed. A number of other communities have already passed this resolution or a resolution very similar to this, and tonight was our turn. Additional comments? Questions from council? Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, first, just a procedural issue. Do we need to make a motion to support this? Yeah, I move to support this amendment.
Apparently, I just went into it. Okay, yeah, sure. Motion made by Councilmember Henin. Who wants to support that?
Support.
Okay, we have support. Okay, and I do have a couple of comments. It really seems like the Dream Cruise organizers aren't taking this seriously. If you go to their website, it still shows where to eat, where to park, where to spend the night. So we know people are going to come regardless, but you know, if they're concerned about health and public safety, they wouldn't still be encouraging it. And you know, that's why I really, you know, feel strongly that this is the right resolution for us to make.
Yeah, I would agree that it seems as if the municipalities are really trying to convey a message to the Dream Cruise Board, and we're hoping that if we are all united, they will get that message a little bit more loudly and clearly. Any additional questions and comments? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick issue on grammar. The second whereas after Bloomfield Hills should be a comma instead of a period, so just something very small.
Excellent. Anything else? All right, well, seeing as we actually do have a motion that was actually moved and supported, we can now move forward to voting on that. So Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R 1820?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M 2420, matter of authorizing the city manager to enter into a one-year professional services agreement with Do-All Cleaning, Inc. of Sterling Heights, Michigan, to perform janitorial services for the city of Berkeley Municipal Buildings, not to exceed $82,200 annually. This expenditure will be charged to account numbers 101-265-811-000, 101-310-811-000,
Mr. Baumgartner, no, I'm just kidding. Is there a motion to approve M 2420?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Dean with support from Councilmember Henin. Now, Mr. Baumgartner, you are allowed to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you can tell from the motion, this is actually a professional services contract, and we have made a standard operating procedure to bid out these contracts when they run to the end of the course. As you can also tell from the motion, this is a comprehensive contract that covers several different departments. That's why the, it's a numerical motion here, that's all the different accounts that it covers across the various departments. That's the reason why it's put up in so many different ways. This was in progress prior to the shutdown that we incurred due to COVID, and so we have managed this process a little bit differently than we have in previous times. We were not able to do a walkthrough, which was a planned part of the bid process, until after we received bids. And so you'll see, you'll notice on the bid results on the second portion of this that there is actually a decrease in some of those costs. That's because the bid respondents initially had to respond basically on text descriptions of the various buildings. And it wasn't until after we started to see things loosen a little bit that we could actually bring them in and have them look and take their own specific measurements and get a better sense of what they were looking at there. This process was managed by Dan Hill, who did a phenomenal job of responding to, you know, basically the world-changing rather abruptly in the middle of a bid process. Dan authored the memo, you'll see, sort of outlining the results, the selection process, and he also compiled the bid results as well, managed the walkthroughs, and kept in very constant conversation with the respondents. So he was their point person. He probably knows more about these buildings right now and this service than anyone else. So he is available to answer any questions, but as you see, we are ultimately recommending Do-All. Do-All was the bidder that didn't have the best response, is the most favorable cost to us. Also, when they talked to Teresa over at Parks and Rec, talked to, I believe, Scott Smith from the Police Department, they gave the best, the most complete recommendation, and Matt Church's vocal library was also a part of the little subcommittee that manages this process. So hopefully that teases it up well. If there's any specific questions, Mr. Hill will be able to answer for you.
Before we get into questions, Mr. Hill, is there anything that you would like to add or that was not covered? I know it was a pretty extensive package. We had all the information in there.
I think Mr. Baumgartner covered everything pretty well. I also tried to make sure everything was down in the memo. As you can see, it's three pages and broken up by subsections, and includes a cost breakdown with what the difference is going to be budgeting.
Yeah, I appreciated the references and the quotes from those references as well. It's obviously something that is important. It's not always just strictly the lowest cost. It's the lowest cost, but also the best references and experience that are going to provide a level of service of what we previously had. So thank you for that. Any questions for either city manager or for public policy assistants? Mayor Protem Dean?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. First of all, Dan Hill, thank you so much for putting together such a complete and comprehensive package. In reading over everything, I had questions, you know, right as I was reading, but they pretty much were answered, so thank you for that. I do like that Do-All will support any recycling programs that we have already in the works, that they're cognizant of that, and that they want to be supportive of the measures that we have in place, so that's a plus for me. I noticed that they offer green cleaning solutions. Do we have to specifically ask for that, or is that something that...
It's not necessarily something that we specifically have to ask for. They already incorporate a lot of green chemical use, if you will. But if we want to move a little bit more and more green-friendly, we can certainly have that conversation with Mr. Rikage, who's the owner and the president, and is very responsive.
Okay, and then the other thing I read was they're doing electrostatic cleaning in light of the pandemic. Is that something that they're just going to do on a regular basis until whenever, or...
So that is not necessarily something that's covered in this initial cleaning, if you will. That's an additional service, but because we'd be contracting with them, we would get a lower price than if we were a different company coming in and asking them to do that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one question. I didn't see the company we have now on the list. They didn't bother to put in a bid or...
They did not bother to put in a bid.
Any reason, as you know, for that?
Not that I know of.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Hill. Very comprehensive. I did have one question. I saw that in Do-All's response to their bid response, that they provide a number of services like carpet cleaning, window cleaning, biohazard cleanup. Are those things that we currently contract out for separately? And if so, will those be, will any of those be incorporated into this bid, or would those be separately contracted out with Do-All or others?
So part of this bid package, I'm not sure the entire, they covered everything as far as the responses. We have items that are daily, weekly, monthly, and quarterly things, such as windows are supposed to be done monthly inside and out. That's something that our current vendor isn't necessarily adhering to, but those services have been wrapped into this bid, as well as Public Works, Community Center, and Library, they all get strip-waxed every quarter. And so that's something we've rolled into this price as well, whereas previously that was an additional service that was separate, that we were just hoping to get the best cost possible and to get the best service possible and make it a one-stop-shop sort of bid.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and also my compliments to Mr. Hill for the thorough work here. Very impressive. So if this were to pass this evening, we'd be moving from Provider A to Provider B. Is there any insight you could share into the transition process, the handover of keys, those kinds of things? Is that a procedural, or is there anything that needs to be negotiated to make sure that that goes smoothly?
Yeah, so our current service agreement with McCoy Maintenance has a provision in it that we have to provide a 30 days' written notice. And so upon approval of this, I would be working with McCoy to provide that notice. They then have to turn over all of their keys that we've issued to them. There's a handful to each of the buildings. And then they also own all of the equipment, so vacuums, the rolly carts that they use. They would then, at the end of that 30-day period, get that out, and then Do-All would come in, and we reissue the keys to them, and then they would have the opportunity to bring in their own supplies as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, seeing no additional questions, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M 2420?
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M 2520, matter of authorizing the closure of Griffith Avenue from the Berkeley Common Building to the intersection at 12 Mile Road from June 2nd, 2020 to October 1st, 2020. The closure is to conduct a Berkeley Common pop-up event titled "Uncommon Taco, Tiki, and Street Food."
Is there a motion to approve M 2520?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we've been slowly moving towards the prospect of reopening our businesses and restaurants across the state, the city has been working with various businesses and owners, as well as our DDA and our Chamber, to try to start making plans for how to facilitate that for our restaurants and businesses. As it happens, Berkeley Common was ahead of the curve there, so they have an application in front of you this evening on how they would like to use Griffith to expand their business, whereas they can't use their indoor facilities, expand onto the public realm here in order to keep it viable and make use of a space that would otherwise not be used real often in light of the 12 Mile Project that's going on right now. So they worked with the Community Development Department, they worked with the Chamber, they've worked with the DDA, as well as all of our staff members, as you can see from the packet, and we think that this is a great idea. We think this is a space that they can utilize. We are going to be figuring some things out as we go, as we are responding to changes at the state level, changes with potential legislation. And so we think this is still something that is definitely in line with what we're going to be bringing to council moving forward. And Berkeley Common has proposed not just doing what they do normally, but making it a whole new experience in the city of Berkeley, which is likely not something we're going to get a lot of in light of what has gone on as of late and what the summer looks like. So as you see from the application packet, there's a memo authored written by staff, which admittedly, it's got my name on it, but Ms. Lou told you, did a fantastic job of putting together and preparing. There's also an outline from Berkeley Common, whose owners are here with you this evening. There is a site plan for what they'd like to do, as well as some aesthetic images of what that would look like. You'll see review letters from DPW and Public Safety as well, indicating some of the things that we'll just need to address as we, as we move through this course of this summer. I have no other items for you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Baumgartner, for the background, and as you mentioned, we do have representatives from the Common with us this evening. Anything else you guys would like to tell us as it relates to the item as before us this evening?
Thank you, Dan. Thanks, Matt. Pleasure to be with you all. I don't know if we have much more. I mean, I think, you know, this is a... Obviously, we're members of the community, you know, our ties run pretty deep here. We all live, you know, here in the community and have children, and we're just trying to, you know, keep our business viable and, you know, do it as safely as possible.
Thank you, Terry. Questions from council members for the applicants or for staff? Councilmember Henin?
Yeah.
Everybody wave, so I just picked the first one.
Yeah, so first, I want to commend you guys on coming so quickly with an idea, and I overall like the idea. A lot of my concern are procedural problems. We were starting out, we don't really, we haven't really set standards for what is acceptable or not, and we're going to talk about this for another two weeks. And when we don't have those standards, other people aren't aware of them, and we won't, probably won't be able to say yes to everybody. I feel like there needs to be some objective way that we can choose. I'd also like to ask, has there been any outreach to the neighboring businesses, not just, not just 24 seconds, but to all the businesses that might be impacted and the residents, especially on Griffith, if they're aware of this plan and if they've had any feedback?
We have had some mild discussions with our business neighbors. You know, today's announcement that we could open restaurants beginning next Monday, you know, is kind of news to us all. We've been sort of flying by the seat of our pants, limping along, you know, I think, so we have reached out. We don't have many, well, we certainly have some residential neighborhoods. There's a parking lot that separates us. We don't have, you know, any type of significant relationship with them, but we'd be happy to reach out to them and ask or advise them of the plan, but we haven't done so yet. And so I guess the only other thing I would say is that, you know, waiting, you know, multiple weeks, we've been limping along for a while, doing obviously curbside delivery only, and we may not have the luxury of waiting much longer, but we have done some initial reach out with neighboring businesses. I think everyone supports the idea in general and is looking for creative ways to, again, operate safely and bring down, bring back revenue and business to Berkeley.
Yeah, but, you know, for us, it's to go ahead and get petitions going or go in front of the Health Department, a site plan review, which is all things we have to do, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean anything until you guys approve us. And we have, are busting our behinds every single day just trying to keep the doors open on a daily basis. So it begins with you guys. So if you give us some, I know that you say you need two weeks to discuss what these guidelines look like. I would suggest you start quickly because it's, the summer will be over before it begins, and all of this planning takes a long time anyway, and we move very quickly. So if you want to give us some guidelines, we're happy to hear. We're happy to do whatever you think is necessary to make this plan viable for the city, for you guys, for the residents. We are very, very conscientious owners and operators. We're not asking for, I don't think we're asking for too much, but we would take what we can get and make it as safe and just a good feeling for the community as possible with respect, respecting our neighbors as much as we can, because, I mean, that's what we've always done. We're not, we're not changing that now.
And, and, Mr. Councilman, from the city's point of view, there are, we've had conversations with the various business owners to gauge their interest in doing something like this, again, us and the Chamber and the DDA, so there is a general awareness that the city is moving in this direction, and the feedback has been positive so far, also as far as the residents that live along there that could potentially be impacted by this closure. Because of the uniqueness of the situation with not only the state's lockdown, but also the road project that's going on, the residents along Griffith are understanding that for a different reason, they may see some service interruptions, and so they, and we haven't heard a large feedback on that as well, and so there's not a lot of strong opposition of the fact that, you know, they may have to go to, you know, to Ravina or maybe to Gardner, or one of the other side streets to get out. So this is a unique situation for sure that we find ourselves in. Our standard rules, our standard guidelines don't really, haven't really been a great guide in this situation, so we had to develop some for a larger deployment on the fly, but as the Berkeley Common owner said, they are very conscientious, and if we were going to have anybody be the first ones to try this out, I'm certainly fortunate that they're the ones that stepped up.
Okay, just a couple of points. I'm not worried about the road closure. I think residents may be more worried about noise falling through into the neighborhood into the evenings. That doesn't necessarily mean that would make me a no, but, you know, I really value resident input on these things, and sometimes... And sometimes the people that live right there are aware of situations that we just may not even think of. And I'm also, I've mentioned this a few times internally, I am not opposed to us meeting more frequently to expedite things because of these very unique circumstances and that I understand how important it is to keep things moving. I have some technical concerns, but I'll yield the floor for now and we'll maybe come back around to them if somebody else doesn't address them.
May I approach M Dean?
Thank you, Your Honor. Katie, Terry, Chris, I hear you. As a fellow Berkeley business owner, I get it, we are working our tails off way harder for way less money just to try and keep our heads above water. This is, it's serious, I get it. And you've just been open. I've been here sixteen years and it's pretty serious for me. I can't even imagine if this were my first year or so of operation. I applaud your forward thinking, being able to pivot, but that's what a small business owner does, right? We're a little scrappy, we pivot, we think out the box, we try and come up with a solution to make something work. And while I know, I believe this would be great for your business, I also think that it would be really good for the community. This is, this is a temporary closure for a very good reason, in my opinion. I think that we, given the set of circumstances that we're under right now, we have to be thinking creatively and differently about how we can move forward. And that being said, I'm not poo-pooing any, you know, organizational considerations that we need to look at. But in the packet, I noticed that, you know, Public Safety, DPW, the Community Development, people have signed off on this, understanding full well that we do have this Twelve Mile Road construction. And the way that you've pivoted for this, I'm going to believe that you can pivot for that and be able to respond in a way that this can work. So I'm just saying that I have faith in you and in your plan and in our city to survive. Our business district needs to survive. That's who we are, part of us as a community, that's who we are. Where businesses thrive, neighborhoods flourish. So I'm off my soapbox now, thank you.
Thank you. Honestly, if anybody had issues with us, they know, like, we would respond within twenty-four hours. And that could be something, it's a work in progress. But we are always and we will continue to put our neighborhood and community first in this, you know, as well as save our business, but if there were issues, we're very conscientious owners.
And then one of the three of us is typically in the building, so twenty more hours is probably a stretch for our response. But I think, you know, to Katie's point, we're just trying to be what we've always been, which I think is an amenity to the, to the community. You know, potentially save our hides and a young business in the thrust of that. But, you know, Gretchen Whitmer said it today, you know, the turning around of a mindset is going to be difficult. And I think this is the safest way for us to do it. We have young children at home and, yeah, thank you for your words.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you all again for your creativity here and for coming up with a really cool idea to see what we can do to, obviously, keep you guys going, but provide a really interesting opportunity for residents and visitors to enjoy and explore a bit more of our downtown. My question may be more for the city manager than for you folks. And that just has to do with the notion of signage and directing folks. Although the Twelve Mile project is upon us, we do still have traffic that will flow on there and somebody might want to try to turn. And so I'm just curious if you could share with the public what our intentions are with putting signage along that way. Presumably coming up Gardner, they'd be able to see that a little bit ahead of them. But on Twelve Mile in particular, especially with all the cones and everything, if someone just says, I just got to turn, I'd hate for there to be some kind of an issue. So if you could explain a little bit about how that's going to be approached?
Absolutely, Mr. Speaker, Councilmember Baker. We have, so if approved this evening, our next immediate step would be work with DPW, Public Safety, as well as HRC to adapt our road closure plan that we utilized for Ravina from a couple of years ago and update that there's, there are standards that we have to meet for a road closure sign to give adequate notice to drivers. And so we would lengthfully that it's transferable. This is not all that different than what we did on the north side of Ravina just a few years ago. And so we would be adapting those exact standards, making sure that motorists along Twelve Mile, as well as along Griffith, all are aware. And so if they do end up turning into there, also, it's nice that Berkeley Common and their site plan provide a bit of a buffer as well, so they're not, this doesn't start immediately adjacent to the sidewalk. So we'll be able to put a lot of orange in place to keep them, keep a motorist from doing any damage to those using the streets.
Tiki orange, I take it.
Yes.
Additional, Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to say, I think that the Public Safety and DPW did an excellent job in commenting this. I agree with all of their comments. And as we move forward with this, I want to make sure that we get those all incorporated into the plan. And you've covered most of the signage ones already, but there are some other things in here that Matt Kane has specified, and I think they're very important also. I did run his bias of people in the neighborhood and I got very positive from it. So I think it's a great idea, I like to see it happen, just want to make sure that everybody's safe. So please, in your administrative reviews, take a look at the comments by Matt Kane and Derek to make sure that we cover all of those areas very thoroughly. So, thank you.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor, just a real quick question from the city manager. So can we talk just a little bit about what's going to happen once the construction actually gets to, on Twelve Mile, actually gets to Griffith, I mean, at that point? And what's the ease? And because it sounds like there is going to be the need to actually access that part. You know, what's going to be the ease of tear down and how long and then back up and that whole process?
So we have a general idea of what that will look like and we're working with the Road Commission through Derek Shulley, who's our point person today. We are advocating and really trying to push them to give us as much advanced notice as possible so that we be able to clear out any of the space that the contractors need in order to repair the apron and the sidewalk at Griffith. We, I hope that they follow through on it. Again, there are some things that, as I said in my intro, there are some things here that we don't yet know that we'll have to be nimble and we'll have to react to. That is potentially one of them, is the Road Commission saying that, you know, today, we need this space. We just, we need to make sure that we know well enough ahead of time to give Berkeley Common that heads up and then we need to hold them to a shorter duration as possible so they, get them back in the business. But when and if that happens, it'll be a short duration in the, in the scheme, in the long, in the grand scheme of what's being requested here this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. And then just real quick, just to echo the Mayor Pro temps comments on the importance of, you know, making sure we're being adaptive for our business community. You know, you guys have certainly gone through an incredibly tough time and then continuing to go through. So thank you for being creative and bringing something before us that really is a good, workable solution to not only help you guys as a business, but to be able to change some of that mindset that was, that was talked about a little bit earlier. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional thoughts or questions? Before I go back to Councilwoman Henan to let him finish his points? Nope, okay, go ahead.
All right, onto the technical issues. Most of them have been addressed, the signs, the traffic barriers and so on. The one other outstanding issue is just with the site plan. And the tables are, the bulk of them, back-to-back, six foot nine inches apart, which, once you plop someone in those seats, it's not going to be possible for them to get a six-foot spacing for them. So I think the seating may need to be reconfigured a little bit in order to accommodate the appropriate social distancing.
We could zigzag it, possibly?
Well, I mean, we, look, we'd be willing to work with, in whatever makes this safe and certainly following any guidelines. Part of, part of our thought process when we're designing the table layout was obviously to keep that distance. And also, we don't anticipate really being at capacity. And so if a couple comes in with two people, they could be sat at one end of the table, they're still going to be taking up that whole table. And so our goal would certainly be to keep customers and clients, you know, more than sixty feet apart. But we can certainly reduce the size of tables, space them out larger. We have adequate room towards the barrier, towards the flower boxes, to scoot all the tables back and really achieve what you're saying without any issues.
There are also, this I'm less concerned about, but there does need to be some consideration of people walking along the sidewalk and their proximity to the tables and people walking by. I'm less concerned about that because that's a short, you know, they're not there for a long period of time and just walking by quickly, but that sort of factors into it, too.
Certainly, we, I did also calculate, I mean, we left some of the actual road surface of Griffith for, you know, pedestrians, you know, assuming that would sort of kind of flow one way. So that the sidewalk along the neighboring building here is still open and then, of course, the part of the roadway as well for pedestrian walkway. And then I think our road, our sidewalk would, we would funnel people towards that other side to pass pedestrian-wise in terms of pedestrian traffic, because that would be barrier off.
I'm going to support this tonight, but I am encouraged to hear that the neighbors are receptive. But I just want to reiterate the importance to me that even, even in these times, even if it's informal, even if it's with a very short notice, that we are reaching out to the neighboring property owners, neighboring residents, neighboring businesses to make them aware of the meeting tonight so that if they had anything, you know, they would be, have the opportunity to make their voice heard. And just hearing more voices is always going to give us the best results.
Thank you, Councilmember Henan. We have our executive director of the DDA with us, I see, Jennifer. Do you have any comments? I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but any, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you. I, you know, a lot of the councilmembers already shared my viewpoints, but, you know, I love that Berkeley Common took this initiative to pivot in this time. I think it's a wonderful inspiration for all of our businesses to kind of get into a creative mindset to see, you know, what they can do creatively on their end. So, good job, Berkeley Common, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Terry and Katie and Chris, for being with us this evening. And Terry, I appreciate the branding that you are also making sure that you are on full display as well.
Nice to know.
The comments that the councilmembers, you know, all brought up are certainly important in outreach, but we would love to hear from as many people as possible. We are also, as we've discussed many times, in very different times than the normal business. And the normal mode of government is the wheels turn very, very slowly. Oftentimes, people would describe that as painfully slowly. And in this case, I think we do need to be nimble and agile and to be able to try things that are not necessarily the norm for us. You guys put together a very comprehensive proposal, you were there very quickly with it, we're able to discuss it at this meeting and not have to wait a couple of weeks before we're able to discuss it. And as Mayor Pro temps started with, our businesses have obviously had a very, very difficult time. And just because things are opening and opening at maybe fifty percent capacity, that does not mean that everybody's still going to feel comfortable enough necessarily going out to those. So fifty percent capacity may not even be fifty percent capacity, and we can't control that. And until there is either a vaccine or for some reason it just disappears, people are going to be a little bit more guarded and cautious about what they do and where they go. So with that in mind, if we can provide somewhere for not only your business to run, but also somewhere that maybe folks feel a little bit safer outside as opposed to being inside, I certainly appreciate the creativity, the ingenuity and the speed with which you have brought this to us, which is making, hopefully, the wheels turn this evening a little bit more quickly than maybe they would have in the past. So I thank you guys. If there are no additional questions or comments, you know, and the last thing, Councilmember Blanchard mentioned, we have great input from DPW, from Public Safety. We will make sure that those are implemented. And honestly, the worst-case scenario, if we keep, if we hear from a number of residents or businesses and it's not working, then we're going to have to pull the plug. And I don't think you guys would necessarily disagree with that because you certainly don't want to be a nuisance. You want to be able to provide enjoyment and an avenue and an opportunity for residents to be able to at least attend and get some tacos and tiki and all kinds of good things. So I appreciate that. Seeing no additional comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M twenty-five twenty?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you and good luck, Terry, Katie and Chris.
Thank you very much, everyone, thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Mitchell, we now move on to item number four, please.
Motion number M twenty-six twenty, matter of approving a one-year contract extension of the 2015-2018 bargaining agreement between the City of Berkeley and the Berkeley Public Safety Command Officers Association.
Is there a motion to approve M twenty-six twenty?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgarten?
I think it's a matter, this is obviously one of two items this evening that are along the same line. As you know, our Public Safety Department has two unions within it. One is the Patrol Union and the other one is the Command Union. We've been through a negotiation process with them to get to this point here. And they have been, again, yet another year, fantastic to work with. We have been so happy with the collective agreement that was signed for the duration of 2015 to 2018 that we're now proposing our third extension of that document with the following two changes, changing the wages and also this will come with a signing bonus in this time as a, now we thank you for, you know, actually being such a pleasure to work with, but also an acknowledgement of what this department faces each and every day. And so we're happy to bring this forth to you. One of the other items on there is to continue the city's existing policy of opting out of PA 152, which we have done since that legislation went effective at the statewide level. The other ones are just, the other caveats to this are merely to affirm that the rest of the tenants of the 2015 to 2018 agreement stand. And then also that the new duration is for June thirtieth of 2021, so just twelve short months from now. And so this is, again, this goes for our Command Unit as well as our Patrol Unit. You'll see that they are identical. And then we continue to have similar conversations with our DPW Union as well. We hope to bring that to you next week.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten. Questions for the city manager? It is relatively straightforward. Obviously, this is an agreement that we've come to with the union. Certain, they are happy with this agreement, as are we, to be able to extend this. This is Command, as the city manager mentioned, we have a similar one, or actually an identical one, for Patrol. And continuing to act out of public act, which you mentioned is something has been our custom and it is something that we are going to continue to do as a promise that we made early on to our officers and we're going to continue to honor that promise. So thank you, Mr. Baumgarten, for mentioning that as well. Seeing no additional, Councilmember Price, I lied.
I just wanted to recognize, I think that doing this as an extension, a one-year commitment, is fantastic. I think it makes a lot of sense with so many unknowns right now that these are the terms and we will be able to reevaluate them in one year. So thank you for your foresight in arranging it that way, city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else looking to hop in here. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M twenty-six twenty?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number five, which looks eerily similar, but Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number five?
Motion number M twenty-seven twenty, matter of approving a one-year contract extension of the 2015-2018 bargaining agreement between the City of Berkeley and the Berkeley Public Safety Officers and the Berkeley Public Safety Officers Association.
Is there a motion to approve M 2720?
Motion.
So moved. Or?
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin, support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten, do you want to go through it all again? I think we're good.
I would just merely add that Patrol Officer Union is just as much of a pleasure to work with as our Community Union.
Thank you. Hey, seeing no additional questions or concerns, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M 2720?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number six, please.
Motion number M 2820, matter of appointing the Public Works Director Derek Schuler as the City of Berkeley's representative and the City Manager Matthew Baumgarten as an alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority Board of Trustees for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and instruct the City Clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACRA Board.
Is there a motion to approve M 2820?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henan with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Mr. Baumgarten, Mr. Schuler is not here to defend himself, so I guess we can probably just move right on through here and steamroll him in.
Sure, when you don't attend a meeting, you get appointed things. No, Mr. Schuler is on a, I'm sorry.
He'll he'll pay for this item and the next item, but go ahead.
Mr. Schuler, this is actually a reappointment for Mr. Schuler. He's done a fantastic job representing the City of Berkeley on this body for for quite some time now. As you know, the Resource Recovery Authority handles basically all of our curbside collections. There are the us, as well as a dozen other communities or so, gather our resources together to to line up recycling, to line up curbside trash collection, to line up yard waste collection as well. And so we have a board that makes a lot of these management decisions. And we are fortunate to have Berkeley represented by Derek on that board.
I certainly was joking. Mr. Schuler is very well respected, not only regionally but across the state. And we have seen that as he's been to numerous conferences, not only as an attendee, but also as the presenter, is very well respected. And it's an honor to have him representing us at SACRA and SACWA. Are there any questions or comments regarding Mr. Schuler's first reappointment this evening? Being none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M 2820?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on, Ms. Mitchell, to item number seven.
Motion number M 2920, matter of appointing the Berkeley Public Works Director Derek Schuler as the City of Berkeley's representative and the City Manager Matthew Baumgarten as the alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority Board of Trustees for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and instruct the City Clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACWA Board.
As we've just discussed, I don't know that I need to throw it over to you, Mr. Baumgarten, unless there's anything additional you want to add to SACWA that was not present in SACRA, but all the same highlights apply to to Mr. Schuler and his work in the community and in the region, certainly. Anybody have any questions or comments? Oh, Councilmember Blanchard, what are you holding up there?
Your water rate cards are ready.
All right, love that time of year. My pocket's been a little light since I got rid of the other one. Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. Any additional questions or comments as it relates to SACWA? Okay. Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M 2920?
Your Honor, disappointed orderably, we need a motion.
Did I not make a motion again?
Sock it to me.
I saw a motion, actually it was made by Councilmember Blanchard and was supported by Councilmember Gavin. Did you miss that?
I did, my bad.
Mine must have froze for a minute. No, it's good, we had it.
My apologies.
Just ready to move this evening. All right, now that we have that, would you like to call a roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number eight on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M 3020, matter of appointing the Chief Innovation Officer Stan Lisica as the City of Berkeley's representative and the City Manager Matthew Baumgarten as the alternate representative to the Intergovernmental Cable Communications Authority Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and instruct the City Clerk to send a copy of this motion to the ICCA Board.
Is there a motion to approve M 3020, motion made by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
With support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
I think it's a mayor, like the previous item, this is also a reappointment. We're asking to continue our existing practice of having the City of Berkeley well represented by Stan on the ECO Board. Stan is actually here to defend himself this evening.
Stan, anything you'd like to say to defend yourself from this appointment?
Negative.
Okay, well, thank you. Just as with with Mr. Schuler, Stan is certainly extremely well renowned in the area. And we are certainly lucky to have him and everything that he's doing here. And his participation as our representative in these board members not only allows him to share what we're doing, but to also hear what some of his colleagues are doing so that he can make sure that he brings the best ideas to us and he leaves the social ones out somewhere else. Any questions for Mr. Lisica? Hey, Stan, speak now or forever hold your peace?
I'll hold it.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M 3020?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 3120, matter of appointing the Community Engagement Officer Tori Mathes as the City of Berkeley's representative to the Community Media Network Public Access TV, CMN TV Board of Trustees for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and to instruct the City Clerk to send a copy of this motion to the CMN TV Board.
Is there a motion to approve M 3120?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
I think it's a mayor, as with Stan and as with Derek, we like putting people on boards that speaks to their skill level and and their wide breadth of experience. And so naturally, we are looking to reappoint Tori to the CMN TV Board as it has helped them in in a number of different ways. And her participation has helped Berkeley in a number of different ways as well. So we're we're happy to see her continue her stead on that board.
Tori, any comments?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Any additional comments from any of our council members? Okay, well, it is, as we've mentioned with the other two, Tori certainly has done wonderful things for our community. As Matt has mentioned, working with CMN as well. And we look forward to her continued role as our representative with the CMN TV Board of Trustees. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M 3120?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We have now come to our second public comments portion of the evening. This is for items that were not included on tonight's agenda. The same rules as before apply, but if your concern again needs to be addressed by a Department of the City or a member of City staff, please make sure to email the Clerk's Office at clerk@berkleymich.net or to call the Clerk's Office at 248-658-3310. And again, if you would like to comment and you are not on the meeting, you want to dial in, that phone number is 1-312-626-6799. Again, that is 1-312-626-6799. You will be recognized by either your name or number. And when you speak, please state your name and city of residence.
Mayor, there is no one in the queue at this time.
All right, we'll give them a couple more seconds for that phone number. And Tori, how do they raise you? Is that star nine if they want to notify you?
That is correct, if they're calling in from a phone number.
If they're calling in, hit that star nine and Ms. Mathes will see that you would like to speak. Still nobody else?
No, sir.
Okay, and we will move on to communications. Ms. Mitchell, who is up first?
Councilmember Baker.
Councilmember Baker, you have the floor.
Great, thank you, Your Honor, and hello again, everybody. Good evening. From a committee perspective, historical and technology both look forward to reconvening at some point here in the month of June. And the Downtown Development Authority has their upcoming meeting next week's Wednesday and and look forward to to seeing some additional progress here as we wrap up this fiscal year and transition into the into the new fiscal year. Projects like the one that we voted on earlier on on Griffith were were great ideas and great examples of things that that are downtown and in great partnership with the Chamber are looking to to really make a difference and and bring about some fun in in a world that desperately needs some. It was John Lennon who wrote, "Peace is not something you wish for. It's something you do, you make, it's something you do, something you are, and something you give away." Now, like like most of you, and I'm sure others will will echo these sentiments, I have been closely following the recent horrific events of of violence and racism in our country. I condemn the inhumanity of the death of George Floyd in Minneapolis after he was held down by a police officer last Monday and the false accusations made against Christian Cooper, a bird watcher in Central Park, simply because of the color of his skin. Before that, the senseless shooting of Ahmaud Arbery occurred while he was jogging in in Georgia. And it's it's tragic that these incidences of bigotry and violence and hate continue. The pandemic we're living in is also a frightening invisible force that's becoming more visible when we see photos of people suffering and hospitalized or when we know somebody personally who's who's been affected. This virus is devastating, but racism in our country is another invisible and horrifying force that spreads when people foster negative stereotypes or assumptions based on the color of a person's skin. And the effects of racism are also deadly. These recent incidents have had a serious impact on the health and well-being of people across the country, especially our brothers and sisters of color. And combined with the public health disparities illustrated by COVID-19's devastation, the news is even more tragic. For all those reasons, I want to take a moment to to think about the friends and families of these people, along with the folks who are just living in the cities that are directly affected. As residents and as a city, we must stand united in rejecting all forms of discrimination and violence in our community. Our city's motto is "We Care." And that means in times of tragedy and fear and suffering, we care by doing what we can to support those among us who are hurting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The Library Board met for the first time since the beginning of the pandemic last week, virtually, of course. We reviewed the detailed plans for a multi-stage approach for reopening the library to the public. And I wanted to thank the Library Director Matt Church and his staff for such well-researched, thoughtful responses to the challenges presented by COVID. I have no doubt that the safety of the patrons and the staff will be the top priority as they reopen. I want to remind residents that in the meantime, remember, our our library has a wealth of digital ebooks, audiobooks, magazines, graphic novels, movies, music, and even narrated picture books that you can access for free from home with your library card. Check out the library's website for more details. And also remember, if you don't have a card or you need to renew, you can do that over the phone simply by emailing, calling the contact info posted on the library's website as well. Today, June 1st, kicks off our LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in Berkeley. Although many of the regional pride celebrations have been canceled due to COVID, members of the community are encouraged to share photos and stories on social media that reflects their support and recognition of the contributions made by members of the LGBTQIA+ community. As our proclamation reminds us, Berkeley's LGBTQIA+ community members are a vital part of our overall community and contribute to making it a stronger one. And then finally, as recent events and demonstrations emphasize the systemic racism in our society, I'd like to recommit to learning how to do better, understanding the devastating impacts of racism and the ways in which I can help mitigate it. Thank you very much to all of the residents who have reached out to me in the past few days expressing their concerns. And I also want to thank Chief Kane and our officers for addressing many of the concerns and sharing how our Public Safety Department works proactively to protect all of our residents against discrimination and excessive force. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. There's a couple of things I'd like to comment on. Both the Chamber and the DDA's excellent job so far in getting the word out to the business community on all the changes that are coming down rapid fire from last week, as Jennifer knows. And we're trying to get them out to the businesses because there's a lot of them that impact them both on the financial side and the operation side. So it's it's been quite an effort to get everything out and both the Chamber and the DDA have done a fantastic job on that. I'd also like to thank our Public Safety Department. They have been excellent in responding to runs, as you noticed by the the documentation we're putting out, that pretty much the number of cases in the city and the number of deaths is is held steady for a while. So both the residents and and the Public Safety Department are doing a good job to make sure that everybody is safe. So I want to compliment them on that. Steve said it excellently. I don't, can't add anything to what he said because you did a great job, Steve. I just would like to say that one of the keys to things like this is community policing. And that's the police work with the residents, get to know the residents. And our Public Safety Department epitomizes community policing. That's that's what the way they do everything. So we intend to continue to do that and hopefully we will be as safe as as we can be through their efforts in the community policing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I too would like to offer my support to the comments made by Councilmembers Price and Baker regarding inherent bias and racism. And I do applaud our Public Safety Department for the work that they do continuously to, you know, keep their training up to date, to to look at these things and to keep our community safe for everyone. Last Wednesday, I believe it was Wednesday, I listened to a webinar put out by the Tri-Community Coalition, Domestic Violence: Breaking the Cycle. And while I don't believe that there was anything new specifically in terms of information, what was stated was that Oakland County does have a lot of resources, but in spite of the amount of resources we have, it's still not enough. You can see on the screen the numbers for Haven, Oakland County. You can see on the screen the numbers for Haven, Oakland County. There's a 24-hour crisis and support line. There is a toll-free number, which is 877-922-1274. The TTY hotline is 248-972-2540. I also have the number for Common Ground, and it's 1-800-231-1127. There was a statement made regarding the incidence of domestic violence having increased significantly. I don't know the source of the statement, but I read in the Detroit News that they're saying that it has doubled from April 2019 to April 2020. Being under this pandemic curtails a lot of outlets and resources for people, so if you need to make a call, please do that. Haven or Common Ground are there to help. If you know someone that is in trouble, please share these phone numbers with them. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan Steering Committee has met going over their five-year plan, and you'll be seeing a survey for that later this month. And lastly, our wellness checks continue. With anyone in the City of Berkeley that would like a phone call, you're welcome to call me, Bridgette Dean, at 248-930-0544, or Teresa McCarleton, the number's on the screen, and I can't see it, sorry. I've really, every call I make, now that we've been doing this for some weeks, I feel like, you know, the old days of pen pals, I feel like I have a phone pal. The calls have gone beyond to, "How are you? How are you doing, and do you need anything?" I feel like we've been kind of, it's a window into each other's lives, and it's a connection that I wouldn't have had with the residents that I'm calling had an event for the pandemic, and so I guess if you're looking for a silver lining, that's definitely one of them for me, so if you want to be added to the list, please let us know. We'd be happy to add you. This too shall pass, and we are Berkeley strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hennan?
Yes, the ZVA will not be meeting in June for lack of cases, but the Tree Board will have their first virtual meeting next week on Monday, the 8th, starting at 7:00 p.m. Then finally, I just wanted to thank my fellow council members for their comments concerning racism, especially Councilmember Baker. It was very well said. I couldn't say it better myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate it. Planning Commission met on the 26th, covered topics relating to Oxford Merchants Park and the development there, facade change on Coolidge for Vibe Credit Union, and then some discussions on zoning text amendments and local business district site regulation. So currently, the next meeting will be June 23rd at 7:00 p.m. on Zoom, and so you can go to the city's calendar page to be able to make sure you have the link for those, along with Master Plan Steering Committee will meet on June 16th at 7:00 p.m., and in the meantime, we've had continuing to conduct the webinars, with the next one that's going to be actually tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. dealing with parking, then on June 4th, which is Thursday, at 11:00 a.m. on Gathering Spaces, and these are all before our next council meeting, so that's why we're throwing those out there, but June 11th at 6:00 p.m. on Stormwater Utilities and Green Infrastructure. The Environmental Advisory Board is going to meet on June 18th at 6:30 p.m., again virtually, and also, just to jump back real quick to Master Plan, over 1,200 Master Plan survey responses as of this morning, so I think that's a really great showing and exciting that so many people are taking the opportunity to share their voice and their vision for our community, so, and certainly want to commend Councilmember Baker's and Price's comments and others as well. You know, this is obviously a tumultuous time with an unconscionable act of brutality that we all witnessed. We need to do our part as leaders up here, and also just as citizens of this country to pull together and to work together to address the institutional biases and racism that does exist in our society. Along that, and echoing some of the other comments as well, I certainly want to commend Chief Kane for his words and all the work and training that the Department of Public Safety and employees do in the department to make sure that everyone is constantly improving and that anyone that interacts with the department is treated fairly, equally, and with dignity, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Many of the things I had written down to say this evening have been very well covered by members of the council. The only other thing I will add is that Oakland County continues to have COVID testing available for any and all residents of the county. Put by appointments, if you would reach out, contact Oakland County Public Health or the Health Department, schedule your test with a nurse, and they'll have driver vacations all across the county, so it's incredibly convenient. Testing remains very important as we address the COVID outbreak, and it has not gone away as we turn our attention to some of the larger darker forces that take hold in our country right now. This continues to be an issue, and thankfully, the county is offering some resolutions at least to the COVID issues. That's the only thing I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Attorney with us today, Anne Christ. Anne, thank you for being with us this evening. Anything you would like to add?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to commend all of the council members' comments on the racism comments, particularly Councilmember Baker's. I applaud and commend all of you on those comments, and I know that Berkeley and the public safety are working in conjunction to make Berkeley a great place to live and be residents of. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. I too have comments that are not really Berkeley-related, they are not COVID-related, they are a national issue, and as an elected leader in this community, I do want to share some of my comments as well. Last meeting, a big focus was placed on inclusivity in our city, and not simply being tolerant of others, but being accepted and supporting of others, and that means something. And while I certainly don't condone violence or looting, I do support the fact that we, as individuals, must stand united against hate, bigotry, and racism. One of Stephen Covey's habits of highly effective people is to seek first to understand, then be understood, and I can't sit here and tell anybody that I know how it feels to be the target of racism, because the simple answer is, I don't. I don't have the panacea for what plagues our country, and it is a plague, and it needs to be eradicated. It's been around for hundreds of years, but it's our job, first individually and then collectively, to stand up against hatred. We started this meeting by saying liberty and justice for all, and unfortunately for many of our fellow Americans, those words ring hollow right now. So please, seek first to understand the plight of others, because only then can we begin to be truly supportive and realize that it's the differences among us, and we need to honor those differences, and we need to remember the struggles, because that together will make us stronger. And then we need to have courageous conversations, because being silent is complicit. We all need to do our parts. Conversations must be had. This 400-plus-year-old wound can't be fixed with a Band-Aid. The wound has only grown deeper, and it's severely infected, and the pain for those that feel it is unbearable. And while this particular wound is the result of hatred stemming from a small minority of those sworn to serve and protect, I want to close with a message that's been mentioned a couple of times from our chief and a statement from our department that he expressed earlier today. Again, this is from Chief Matt Kane. "I want to take a moment to reaffirm to the public that the Berkeley Department of Public Safety will always treat everyone we encounter with dignity and respect. We strive to accomplish this by hiring the right people, conducting extensive training, and holding our officers and staff accountable. As a department, we continue to improve ourselves through de-escalation training, diversity, decision-making, interacting with people with special needs, and implicit bias training. This training, conducted through in-person, online, and scenario-based methods, is an ongoing process. The department has also participated in the voluntary national use-of-force data collection since the inception of the program. To participate in this program, we voluntarily submit monthly reports to the FBI reporting any incidents involving a fatality or serious injury connected to the use of force or a firearm shot at or in the direction of a subject during the use of force. We have submitted all zero reports and have had no incidents meeting the criteria. In addition, we also have in-car cameras on all of our mark patrol vehicles and fire apparatus, and our policies and procedures are reviewed and updated as necessary. We always investigate all use of force by our officers. Each and every event is used to hold our officers accountable and is a method to improve our performance in the future. The use of excessive force is never appropriate and will not be tolerated. We appreciate the support of our community and strive to be as open and transparent as we possibly can. We are the community and are always here for you." I want to thank the chief for those words. Our department has and will continue to do their very best to serve and protect all that come to our city. They're doing their jobs, and now it's on all of us to do ours as well. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So?
Motion made by Councilmember Henan with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Our June 1st, 2020 meeting is adjourned.